In the meeting to order, remind everyone it's recorded. We have some new items on the agenda for discussion. The school resource officer, I thought we discussed this the last work session. Do we have more discussion on this?
I think we probably just need a table of another week. So at this point, the solicitor looking over the contract and...
Oh, I thought this came from our solicitor, from their solicitor to our solicitor and they already approved it.
It did. I think our, oh, our solicitor approved it?
I believe so.
Right.
No, the school district solicitor wrote it and sent it to John.
Right.
He wanted it forwarded to the three of you so that you can also review it.
I had a discussion with John in regard to this and he said that it looks good, in his opinion, to go.
Yeah. So I, I personally may want to do a little due diligence before, you know, we bring it up in the next meeting, but I don't foresee any issues.
No. I know that the two of you had brought up some of your concerns and I think most of those were addressed within the agreement already. And those were the concerns that I discussed with our solicitor. And he felt that this was the agreement that they had used in another school and felt that it was a pretty sound agreement. And if you certainly have questions, please, we can bring in our solicitor and discuss it before we carry this into another meeting.
I feel pretty comfortable voting on it. Our next meeting is a week from Wednesday, so we'll have another work session if there are any issues we want to bring up, so.
Right.
Okay.
I apologize for the delay. Is that the agreement that the school district...
School resource officer.
Our insurance agent has a question about some ordnance too.
Okay.
Just to be sure that we'll cover properly and what shared liability.
Okay.
So I appreciate that you pulled the call.
Okay. Could we put him in touch with one of us so that we can relay that to John or...
Sure.
Or if you would do that?
Sure. I was gonna send him a copy of the agreement because I had said that there was a paragraph in there that referenced liability and he wanted to check out against other counties. It's done elsewhere, so he just wanted to be sure that we had everything in there as it should be.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Judy. Right. Any questions on this? School resource officer? No? All right. C cap, technical support contract for human services. Mary Kushner has something more to share with us on that.
The C cap with our current data systems called CAPS. And it is a system that was developed and is maintained by Avanco. And we've signed contracts over the past year since you've been on board with Avanco. And anytime there's an upgrade, there's another increase. And as CYS administrators and personnel, we don't know when those are really the cost of it. It's just what we're told to pay and we're kind of a captive audience. So C cap is willing to take on their technical department and look at those contracts and those upgrades to make sure we're not being overcharged with the cost coming back to the county of about $840. They sent out a draft last week to the counties and requested the commissioners sign it. And then realizing that you're gonna have a county commissioners meeting coming up here in March, so they wanted to present it to you directly so that they could give you more detailed discussion. So hopefully by the end of March, we'll have the finalized version to come back for signature to the board.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mary. Well, we'll look forward to that at C cap then. Change of signatures on work release account. Judy, do you wanna talk about this?
Yes. That's with, I believe Northwest Savings Bank gets a checking account with the transition of the new person that's taking over with the work release program with Chris Whittleson retiring. We're trying to bring the accounts into compliance with what our auditors recommended. Any of them that are under the Commissioner's federal ID number are also in our county's county software system. Presently, somehow that was set up with just the manager or director of the work release program signing the checks on that account and that's all. And they were operated out of a manual checkbook. We're bringing that checkbook online in the county software. We're going to probably mimic what they did back to January 1st, so we'll have the full year on it. But physically, we're actually gonna start taking over issuing the checks and taking care of the deposits through our system as of March 1st. The bank in order to add your signatures to the account needs it officially stated in a public meeting that the commissioners are changing the authorized signatures on that. My recommendation would be that you go with the same signatures that we use on everything else, we call three commissioners. And the treasurer being electronic facsimile, so it'll just be printed through the software as normal. We would follow all the same procedures with a dispersment report like we do on the others for your approval for any funds going out. Volume on that kind of varies and I don't know that we're gonna be able to stick to a biweekly check processing routine for that because as inmates are released, they need to give them whatever funds they have if there's anything held there that belongs to them. So we may be sporadically issuing checks on that. It's about anywhere between 30 to 45 checks a month that get issued because you pay for collections out of there and you also pay money to their commissary accounts out of there. And it will also entail about three to five deposits a month into the account that the Treasury Department will have to take on. And I've already spoken to the treasurer about that.
Okay.
Basically, we need it stated officially that you're changing the signatures required on the bank account.
So it's stating it officially here, do what...
It had to be in a public meeting that was documented with minutes that we could take down to the bank, so.
Yeah, that sounds enough like action that we should probably wait until next Wednesday.
Action. Mia?
So the next, okay.
It's not a bad version, right?
Yeah, you don't need it sooner.
I mean, we should've done yours.
As long as we can get it before March, when's your next meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Yeah.
As long as we have it before March 1st, that's all we're looking for.
Okay, good.
But they just wouldn't issue a signature card to you just on the say so. And it's up to the commissioners too whether they think they want to keep anyone from the work release program or the warden of the jail on there as a signer also. We don't have that on any of our other accounts. I don't know that it's necessary. The only one that we do alter like that is domestic relations and that's because it's a state requirement that you consist cast to sign on those, so I, you know, a stack of four signatures seems like enough on a check.
Right.
I mean, obviously, you've talked to John Collins about this and he's aware of the potential change.
Yes. And I've talked with Chris and we've also had Ryan in here talking with him, so.
Okay. So they're happy with unloading it probably?
Yes. We've debated back and forth about whether the software they were using, they were using the software to do the accounting end of it, yet they were manually winding the checks in the typewriter and then running through a check protector machine. And I think it's gonna be beneficial to all.
So this should save us on ribbons, right?
Well, I can tell you this, I looked at the price of the checks he bought last time.
You do have a typewriter on this.
If we really get it, it's really a savings there.
Is anybody in the lot use it? A little bit, few people who use the typewriters anymore. I'm surprised.
We get a lot.
There are certain reasons you need those.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Judy. All right. That's it for new items on the agenda. Quarterly objectives.
Do we wanna bring up the IGT though, or new items?
Oh, we do have something that we need to add to our commissioners' meeting agenda in regard to a resolution for the IGT. Yeah, do we have a copy of that, Pam? We don't, do we?
We don't even have, I don't even think we're outside the final copy yet.
Well, I have a copy that I sent her. I don't think it's in this packet. Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, I think we were satisfied with that, so we'll be finding one other version.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna continue fighting that battle with DHS.
So we'll discuss that at the first board meeting in March with the Rouse, Pam, and then I can get you the final draft?
Right.
Okay, okay. So it won't go on Wednesdays? No. Okay. Anything new? Else new that you wanna bring up? Anyone? Okay. Judy, nothing else? All right. I'll open it up. Whoever wants to go first?
All right. So eye tracker, still making progress, but ran into a couple snags. I think last week I said that this week we would get the maintenance portion up a really, it's not Colby's fault, but somewhere along the process, we're having a little trouble getting some bugs worked out on it. So that'll be, I don't know, hopefully this week. And I'd really like to get that going and get everyone trained on how to use, put in a maintenance request ASAP because particularly right now, we're kind of short-staffed and tasks are getting backlog and lost and such. We want to move on that. As I said last time, I think the hazmat overhaul, you're here, you wanna give an update on that?
Right now, a lot of the stuff in the building's been, it's getting ready. The doors are all done. Matt's moved a lot of stuff, but now we're kind of waiting for, the heaters don't work in that section.
At all?
No.
Oh.
And the problem is, is Matt's gonna have Doug look at him, so Doug can fix that without having an outside contractor do it. So it's, the biggest thing is that it can't be below freezing in there. It doesn't need to be 60 degrees in there. We need it like 45, 50 degrees normally because of some instrumentation can, SCBA isn't instrumentation can, you know, the freezing can cause issues. But I need to get, the one door that we put in, the one door that we put in, they're gonna put the, like, the con trailer and that stuff in. You're gonna get a small load of gravel and put some gravel in there because there's never been a door there, so it's about, step about that high of getting in there right now. It just had never had a door there. Something we did in there temporarily. Like I said, other than that, I just wait to get the heat fixed.
Do you need any more from the commissioners?
Not really, other than, it's just, we're good with that. Just, when Doug gets back, we can, the hazmat guys are out right now. Guys probably got the knowledge center notification, there's a tanker on its roof across from the Christian school. It didn't evacuate the Christian school because it was far enough away and it leaked just a tiny, tiny bit of gas, you know, and so.
That's under control, man.
Yeah, that's all I did. They're pumping it out. It's probably pumped out right now and probably getting rolled over. One of the fortunate things of that section of road in Warren County is there's a road that runs paraplegic, you know, the old Pittsfield Road, so it's not detrimental, you know. Hurts Dairy Queen, takes us close at lunchtime and symbol dicks and...
That seems to be a stretch that's seen a few tankers wherever.
It seems like we have those couple, we have those few curves in the county that we have issues with. And then we have those couple straight stretches too. That one between Youngsville and Pittsfield is almost straight all the way through there and we have crashes. And that out in Shufflin, the St. Brook stretch.
That stretcher road gets really nasty in winter. I mean, there's a lot of black ice on that road. I remember several, and the only reason I know that is because driving down Pittsburgh for school, I mean, there were several times you'd be fine and then you'd get out there and, I mean, it literally looked like it was a fine road and then a ditch.
And there's a lot of stuff through there, more than likely. I don't know what happened here, but more than likely, somebody was turning left into the Christian schools that time of day, probably turning left into the Christian school. Somebody coming, the truck drivers, you know. It only takes a second to be distracted and if you just went off the road a little bit, it probably could roll over, so.
From all the sirens going off all weekend, it sounds like you guys must've been pretty busy.
They were reeling with the windstorms over the weekend, but...
Thanks, Tom.
If I could ask you a question. You talked about the heating in there and waiting for Doug to get back and the damage it could cause. If waiting for Doug to get back, how much is the potential in damage to your equipment?
Oh, no, it's, everything's still over in the other part.
Okay.
Everything's still over in the other part, it's just we haven't, can't move anything until, yeah, we're not, nothing's...
That was a worst-case scenario is we wait another month.
Right.
And then hopefully it won't be snowing anymore.
Right.
Or this weekend.
Yeah, it's actually, it'll be nice again.
Right. Okay, good, thank you. School resource, is that what that says?
Do you need that turned a little bit?
Yeah, I need my glasses. I don't know if that helped.
Don't be shaking your head, Jeff. You're gonna get old too. Again, he's not old.
Yeah, really.
Professor over here.
I don't think distance is related to being old, but this is why you're old.
Yeah, I don't have that problem, yeah. No update on work instructions or procedures? I do wanna get with you at some point to figure out kind of the, I don't know, I guess we can't call it fiscal code because it's not really fiscal code, but some sort of documenting system. Maybe this will be a project for an intern to take on this summer?
Judy?
It sounds like something that's outside of...
Have you shown the section of ACU Fund that you haven't been using?
The budget?
In regard to budgeting?
No. I haven't shown them yet. I did catch Jeff real briefly on you the other day, but...
So maybe it's just about using that?
Right.
Well, is it like a common thing every year?
It has, it has an area that you can make notes in it to, that I can't talk, specific budget lines that way. And there is a minor bit of what was called a fiscal code from many years ago in one of the audited financials. It's prior to Dreschler and Malachi. I don't remember if it was one we had to write into, she would. I have an old one from down there. It also had the organizational chart in it, so there might be, there might be older documents that we, that just need some updating and rolled forward to come closer to what you were looking for for...
Yeah. And for your benefit, I suppose, our issue is that when we went to craft a budget this year, you know, we look back historically, one line item's $10,000, one year, five the next, and then 20. And we just kinda wanna keep some sort of record as to why it's jumping around and why people made the decisions that they did, mostly because memories fail and documentation is lost. So we want it one central place. And then the other thing is just to make sure that when our departments and/or fiscal are coding expenses, that they're hitting the right account. Because there has been, and you've done a lot of work on this, but particularly previous to you, you could have a gas and oil account from one department that was used for all travel and then another one that used it for conferences or something, you know, it's just kind of all over the map. And so we wanna get some consistency so that when we look down and say, gas and oil, that means it's gas for each department and not something else in there.
And part of that was what departments did to not end up with items in their budget during the year that were non-budgeted items.
Right.
Because they didn't budget line for conferences, they'd always poked it in travel or someplace else before. So as we, I think we're doing better with it this year as we try to amend the budget each time when new things come up. And both of the people in fiscal now have a full printed copy of this year's approved budget. So as new and unusual things come up, they're writing right on the pages and making notes of which ones they view as to try to have more consistent practice. And, you know, we had turnover in that position again and again in the last couple of years of people, so everything kind of just got the new person's interpretation of what code it belonged under for the expense lines. I mean, there's some things that are dead set that you wouldn't question at all. There's other ones that you get a conference for someone and they don't have conferences in their budget, where are you gonna poke it at? Ms. Laney's office expense, you know, because you don't, you don't know. So we are, I think we're getting a better handle on that from your moving.
You are making great progress, but it still seems like that one project of really, maybe just getting that old information uploaded is enough of a, it has enough of a defined start and end and it's enough hours that we may want to give it as a special project to maybe Colby or an intern or something like that. Just so you're not standing here until they know that every name. Okay. What is under work instructions? Homes. We're, we've got domestic relations now done, jail, sheriff. As far as I can tell, everyone's liking it and it's definitely saving us money. In terms of when we do the courthouse, that's probably gonna be quarter or two at this point, right? So we're looking at a couple more months. And MDJ offices, I think Bill might just be handling kind of as he can. Annex building, no update until the snow, although we did hear that Shane said that the contractor for the roof, they come pick up the drawings and stuff and apply for the permit from the city, so we'll hopefully have a new roof on that as soon as the snow breaks.
You took off for bids on the roof?
Yes.
The lowest one, got it?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you are going out for bids for the drainage problem you have up on, I guess it's the avenue.
Yeah, well, not yet. We first have, we're first going out to bid to get a engineer in order to actually create the specs for all of these various projects.
You don't have a county engineer?
We do not.
Generally, I mean, you know, like municipalities, you guys have stuff going on all the time, so it's a necessity with us, you know? We go through periods where there isn't a whole lot of big project activity.
But have you ever considered hiring a county engineer? Because every time you need an engineer, you gotta go out and see who's, who you're gonna get the cheapest.
Well, that's what we're gonna do. Like, over the next year, we have a lot of different stuff going on and there's also the possibility of this person working with, like, Lori Dunlop and some other people, you know, on projects that aren't necessarily directly related to, like, the buildings or grounds.
Right. No update on the workflow of project management software, except that I found a great book and I've mentioned it a couple times or, I've mentioned ideas from it a couple times in these meetings and it's called Rhythm by Patrick Thean. I was talking to one of their sales reps and they said that I could get a copy for $4.95. So I was kinda thinking, if it's all right with you guys, maybe we could just buy a box of them and give them to the department heads?
That's up to you.
I mean, it'll only end up being, you know, maybe under a hundred bucks, obviously, so, well, for the ones that are directly under us. And I wouldn't mind leading some sort of a, you know, I don't wanna say a reading club, but at least highlight some things out of it so that people are wanting to read more about process improvement, project management and such, that they would have a resource to turn to.
I think that if you're gonna engage in a project like that, you probably want to, you know, give them the opportunity to sign up for it and get involved in it. Having just gone through a lot of different corporate situations where they hand out books, like, nobody ends up reading them. Like, there's like a handful to do and they should be given the opportunity to read them, but a lot of the other people just, they'll end up, you know, paperweights or...
Well, you have the book, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You could let all of the department heads know that you encourage them to read it and that it's available from you to borrow it?
Yeah, I like the idea of having literature available to everybody for development. I mean, I think that the people that are interested in, I mean, why get it and force them to pay money on their Kindle to read it, you know, if we have, can have it available here and people can read it in perpetuity, so it'll be it.
Right.
So we could get our own copy for the county and then make it available?
Yeah, let's just get a few and, like I said, they're less than five bucks, so...
If this book's less than five dollars, cannot you buy one per department head and give it to them and say, allow your employees in your department to read it?
Well, that's what Jeff's referring to.
Jeff's right. You buy one for everybody in this courthouse and half of them are better.
That's what I said.
I was saying, give one to each department. It's just, and I, and I don't have a problem with that on this basis, I'm just saying that I, having seen that numerous times, I just, you know, there'll be a handful of people that'll be really interested in it and, you know.
As a department head and as my, myself a fiscal person, I would rather see you have one or two copies available that people can take and read as they want to. We just took phone stipends away from all the employees, not all, but the employees who had them, saying we were trying to cut costs. And then to turn around and buy paperback books and hand to them and say, we want you to read this, might not go over well.
The difference being that that saved us $20,000 a year. I'm asking for like $50.
The phone stipends did save us $20,000. And that's what I'm talking about. These are, these are basically gonna go to department heads that you took the phone stipends away from.
Yes. But the idea being that they'll be more efficient with their time.
Yeah.
And they'll be better employees.
I'm totally agreeing with having the book available reading.
We do have a department head meeting tomorrow. I think that would be a good thing to bring up at the department head meeting.
Right. I mean, I don't think $50 is excessive and if $50 is gonna be a problem, I'll front it myself. All right. ERP system. I am talking with, I've continued to talk a little bit with Tyler Technologies. I think we should probably approach, was it DevNet? Is that the other company that we talked to?
Yeah, they have a good setup too.
Yes, we, it's time to, I think, start vetting them as well. And I talked to a financing company that specifically works with Tyler out of Philly area. And I don't know if it makes sense to go with, you know, financing option if we're gonna move forward. I think it's worth vetting, at least to see what kind of cost it would be, but I don't really feel capable of doing that, so I'm gonna loop you into the conversation with them just to figure it out. And then, what does that say? Population migration? Oh, that project that we're doing with Pitt Bradford. I'm going out on Thursday to meet with them, so I'll have an update next week. That's it for me.
To go back to the ERP thing really quick, we took a trip down to Jefferson County and met with the commissioners there and their fiscal department and had a really fantastic meeting with them, going over all the stuff that Jefferson County has done to get their, you know, fiscal house in order over the course of the decade. They were in really bad shape in 2004 and did an overhaul of what they did. And a lot of the stuff they put in place was really helpful. And, and the software, the Tyler software was very impressive in the way that they used it in order to save and also, you know, gather data, keep track of it, better accounting, you know, across the board. And, you know, I think that it's a good thing to continue to, to look at and evaluate these software systems because I think, I think that we're really missing the boat to some degree on this, like, if we keep going the way we are, just 'cause there, I think there's a lot of savings on the table that would offset the cost of having a better software system. Agreed?
Well, I'd like to hear what your thoughts are on what our savings would be.
Well, for no other, okay. Well, I think that we, I think that's something that would have to be quantified as part of the evaluation. I mean, the way that, the way the system works is that everything gets poured into it, so your ability to track data, like, like right now, it's not hard for a lot of our stuff to end up in different places and, and it's also hard to know in real time, like, what's going on with the budget and what's going on with, you know, a lot of different data. And so this system's really robust and it, and it puts in a lot more controls, like, so how people spend, what they do, that kind of thing. And, and it's easy to get a very global picture of, like, what's going on with the county at any given time. You could even hypothetically, you know, set it up in the same way without having to do, like, the open government to have, like, just more data available to everybody all at once. And, and then there's just, like, a ton of different bells and whistles and it comes down to, like, the mining processes that we engage in every day with, you know, transactionally. I think that, that, you know, getting those in a system where we can manipulate them, you know, gives us a better opportunity to, you know, kind of tighten everything down to where we're using the most efficient system possible. I was just really impressed with, with the level of data they have. You could pull up everything like that in a moment's notice. They had historic data and then they've, they've been using, they're one of the longest users, I believe, in Pennsylvania, like, the Tyler Financial Solution and, you know, it just, they've, they've, like I said, they've gone from a place where they were in real trouble fiscally and have, basically, I mean, this, this solution is also part of, like, they did the thing with the Center for Local Government or the Governors, whatever, the Center for Local Government. And they did the, that application where you, basically, they come in and they assign a consultant, a fiscal consultant to your county and then they basically, you know, it's like an all hands on deck situation and they put in all these processes that help fix their financial situation. We're not in a dire financial situation, but they've managed to get to a point where they have enough of a reserve account that they don't require a TAM on a yearly basis. They've, you know, they have very good financial reputation and they're, they've kept all of their, you know, like, their, their ability to do projects is a little bit better, I think, than ours is because of the position there fiscally. The one thing that fascinated me is we went on and on about all the different things that The one thing that fascinated me is we went on and on about all the different things that they're doing fiscally. And then at the end, we we were like, what's that line item that's, you know, what's this line item for for debt or whatever? And they just borrowed ten million dollars to build a jail. And I was like, wow, that, like, it just kind of cracked me up. That was something that kind of took me by surprise. But my point is, is that uh I think that if we had any point where we were gonna legitimately evaluate it, if we thought there was gonna be savings or ways that we could save, that should be incorporated into the evaluation. I think that there are a lot of of things that are not necessarily floating around, but I think that we could have a tighter handle on and that that would be where you would see the savings.
Well, my only concern, and you know, certainly the Tyler software, is the cream of the crop. My only concern is, you know, how are we gonna pay for that? And where's the money coming come from? It's very expensive software. And before we really vet other systems, I think it might be helpful for us to uh really look at what we have currently in place and all of the sections of Accufund, um, or additional pieces of Accufund that are available. Maybe we should consider looking into whatever we can do to make Accufund more useful to us.
We are considering that. It's obviously is going to be part of the overall DevNet, Accufund, Tyler, New World. You know, put it on a spreadsheet, compare all the features, figure out the cost savings if for no other thing than opportunity cost on people's time. And um we'll make an informed decision then. But um I think the main reason that I'm so motivated to look into it is that the user interface and real-time reporting on everything but Accufund is good. Accufund is by far subpar and hard to use. People don't use it. And then to throw on top of that, their licensing for seats is really screwy compared to others because you have to have um seats in order to give people access. Whereas the other um systems tend to have it broken out in different classes. So for instance, you could let every department head on for free to upload purchase orders or something. Can't do that with our system.
And I understand that. And certainly, you know, we all want Cadillac, but we might be stuck with Volkswagen.
Like the, I don't think it's a fair comparison because what we currently have is more like, uh, I don't know. You know, some broken mountainous. Worse than that. I mean, it's not, I don't know. It runs fine. I'm not, I'm not gonna poo-poo that one. What I am saying, I guess, is that we could get the Cadillac, but just by getting New World is not by inherently getting the Cadillac. I mean, it depends on how many bells and whistles you want.
Right.
The base model of it is not an excessive cost, I don't think particularly. If you take that hundred and twenty grand or whatever and space that out over a few years and consider the opportunity cost that you'd be saving in terms of HR time, uh, and fiscal time, treasury's time, our time. I mean, just the amount of time that we spend exporting things and messing in Excel sheets is an incredible amount if you put a dollar figure to it. So I still think it's, we're not at the point to be really arguing about this.
Right, no, I don't think we are. I think we're having a good discussion though.
Right, and I I think we need to continue moving forward with evaluating at least Accufund, DevNet, or whatever the name of it is, and Tyler's New World.
Okay.
May I say comment on the software? The, I know you said a hundred and twenty thousand figure. I was looking at was closer to three hundred thousand. My understanding was that you were looking at maybe going just with select modules at first and then adding other elements in later. Um my reservations on that is after being through conversions before on software, if you were to pick, for example, their budgeting software is fantastic, so you want their element for budgeting software. And right now you think HR and payroll are important items. So you're gonna go with budgeting, HR and payroll now and hope that you're gonna add in the general ledger later, that you're gonna add in accounts payable later, that you're gonna add in receiving later. And these elements, your budgeting won't work without those.
Yeah, no, we're starting with what we have currently, all those features, and then maybe some more. But there's no way that we would do, we would start without those critical components.
Okay, all right. Because that's, when I saw those criticals, I thought we were down to a close, a figure closer to to three as opposed to one twenty. So that's, I'm just concerned that if you do decide to make a step, that we get the things we really need in there included. So we're not manually doing Excel interfaces to try to get the information back forward.
I mean, that would be counter, that would counter the entire value of the thing.
And, you know, Ty- Tyler, Tyler's beautiful. I'm sure there's other ones out there that are good too. I will say this, you know, Accufund is clunky to use. It's not user-friendly, but there are a lot of elements of Accufund that for whatever reason in the past here historically, they've not chosen to use. And one of them was a a brief bit that I showed Cindy the other day on budgeting. Um and there is, you are correct, there is the individual weird user fee that to open up the budgeting to let department heads into that section, budgeting and purchase requisitions, we would be paying um two hundred and twenty-five dollars per seat for anybody that we wanted to open up that user license to. Accufund does have different levels of user license. So you could get one that does those portions without check programming abilities and everything else, not at the full rate. But you are correct, they do have a limited number of seats that you you buy to let people into your software. That way I'll make user license application. But there are some additional things in Accufund that have not been used over the year and I'm years. And I'm sorry to say, there are modules in Accufund that the county owns that they've never even used. Um they basically brought it in and kind of plugged in some of the other things that they were already going with. And um we haven't taken full advantage of the money we've spent on Accufund. It is a drop in the bucket in its overall cost compared to these other ones, but it's clunky and doesn't give you all the reporting that the other ones do. But there are some things we could be doing that just because historically they haven't. When I came in, I was not doing either. Um but the budget part that I showed to Cindy, that is something that we could open up to department heads. They would enter their own budget information in. All the commissioners could see it live as as they're doing it. You can reflect back onto your prior years. You can do a drill down into the prior years. They've never elected to do it here. So there are, there are some things there is.
That'll all go to the evaluation. You're gonna be key point.
I'll be the first to say though, it's not user-friendly. To get reports out of it is is hard to understand what you need to do to get reports out.
That said, if creating work constructions, detailed work constructions for everybody and buying those seats is more cost-effective. I mean, it will be more cost-effective most likely, but the trade-off being the time savings and the terrible user interface. Uh, you know, we need to weigh it and, you know, in the interest of time.
Either way.
No, it's a massive project.
Big training everyone on Accufund would be a nightmare as well.
Agreed.
You gotta teach department to.
Well, you're gonna have a level of training no matter what you use, so.
Well, if other ones easier than maybe.
I think that the, when you have a discussion about usability, the number of people who legitimately use a software is the greatest indicator of how usable it is. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know that anybody other than Judy and Angela and occasionally Pam really have used Accufund. You've used it.
I've used it.
I've I've tried to use it at different times. I mean, and um the thing is, and I'm, I I, I mean, like, I I agree with Ben. Like, this has been a general discussion and evaluation. My perspective on it is, is that um a lot of other counties invest more in their fiscal concerns than we do and they get bang for their buck with that investment because their ability to make smart decisions on their fiscal, you know, their fiscal situation is much greater. We, in my opinion, make too many decisions um based on shoddy data that, you know, or or it takes so long to get that data in some cases. It's not, it, the the decision can even change. So it's just something to consider, I think, you know. I mean, if 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 we thought that it was an excessive, I'm sure everybody here would agree that if we really felt that the cost was excessive, I mean, we wouldn't engage in it, you know. But I, very few, if anybody, use Accufund. And I think that if you gave access to anybody else without an excessive amount of training and then giving them some reason to legitimately use it, I I have a hard time believing that they would, you know. And that just kind of goes to, I mean, and this is the thing, and I'm sure Judy, Judy's seen the software, so she knows. But, you know, sitting and watching them have just like a simple menu, they click on a button, put in a number, and then the whole thing comes up. I mean, it, you know, and 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 all of their, I mean, just historic data. I mean, they were looking at stuff from two thousand and four. Like for us to get two thousand and four financial data is almost impossible, you know, to know the history of like what, you know, what a particular department spent on a particular line item. I mean, it's really difficult to do right now. And um, you know, that, the, the, you know, it's just, I I think that there are good arguments on both sides.
Keep keep in mind though, when we do switch, if if we do switch to a new software, Tyler, whomever, going down the road, we're not gonna gain any history. Accufund is gonna come in clunky as it is. That information is the information that exists. So to build history is gonna be, yeah, for commissioners, how many years down the road, they'll have history. It's not gonna help you in the next two years, three years.
My goal, and whether I be successful or not, and I'm I'm sure Ben and Cindy would agree with this, is to leave the county in better shape than I found it. And I think that having, giving future administrations the ability to see what we were doing and why, I think, is a really important thing. There are a lot of things that I'll, that I'll, we'll find all the time and we go, why in the world is this this way? And there's no way to like verify. And then you find out, you make a decision, and then afterwards you find out it was that way for a very specific reason and that you shouldn't have unlocked the, you know. And I think having that data can sometimes help you avoid making mistakes too. That's all.
No, if money were no object, I'd be saying go for Tyler right away. It's it's really, it's really nice and user-friendly, everything the whole way through. It's definitely gonna be a big evaluation between actually being able to quantify the savings that it's gonna do. And if that can be done, that's great.
What's the cost difference? Is it double the price or triple the price? Like what?
It depends, it's like, you know, it depends on, it's like, it's like getting a car. It depends on whether you want Wi-Fi in it or whether you want, you you want a cassette player.
It's like, we're really not at the point to be having this discussion.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Yeah. We're not, even if we gave you a number, it's not apples to oranges.
Yeah.
All right, that's it. And then Tyler Technologies is, the regional nine-one-one consortium just had three vendors to look at our regional CAD project. And by far, Tyler Technologies was leaps and bounds ahead of the other two that we had committed. Those were top-of-the-line companies also.
And you make an interesting point, which is that Accufund is Accufund and is pretty much just fiscal. I mean, the nice thing about Tyler is if you, you can start building out other modules. So next thing you know, we can have nine-one-one data being imported if there was a reason to. I don't know what that would be, but assessment would be, could be on a Tyler system. Tax claim could be on a Tyler system. And the data through, is it APIs? Would they be using APIs? Because they're all.
That's sort of it, yeah.
Either way, um, they all work together seamlessly, so.
And not all, and not all, it's like, when you speak of Jefferson County, when Jefferson County was looking at new, New World at the time, not Tyler, but they were looking at it to replace their CAD. Once they started figuring out figures, the one that I says, well, wait a second. You guys are already using it in the county. So they took a hundred thousand dollars off the price of the CAD because they were already an owner of it, so.
So you're saying if nine-one-one uses it first.
Right, we've got it first.
If you buy it first, then we can get ours.
And that's, and that's what it should be.
I made the recommendation, you're looking to Tyler for nine-one-one.
Well, and more than likely, more than likely, in the first quarter of twenty eighteen, they will be using Tyler. So, yeah, unfortunately, hopefully paid for in fifteen percent money, zero dollars coming out of it.
I have to tell you, not that you would want it, Accufund does have tax assessments out there. I'm sorry that I.
One of the, one of the other discussions that's going on with this too is that Tyler is a global, like, government software solution. So, you know, part of the evaluation has to be how many different one, you know, individual software contracts that we have that as a whole could be eliminated by having one contractor of one company that does all of those things better than all of those individual contracts do. And that's kind of part of the evaluation too, because we.
I know, I do too.
Okay.
So I had a meeting at one, so does Ben. We have a lot of people here, so why don't we, unless Commissioner Igleson, you have something. Why don't we open this up to any questions?
I'm only here for one reason.
I know why you're here.
As a member of the CAG and I represent the township with legislation, I have had twenty-some calls from different townships. They are highly upset at the ten percent that you wanna take out of liquid fuel money that are going to the townships. Here's the one answer I always get. Where does the commissioners plow roads, repair roads with our liquid fuel money? That liquid fuel money, and I'll pick a small township beyond Sheffield, they'll get no road work done unless they use liquid fuel. Going to the other side of the county, before you get to Corey, and we all know it's Columbus, they have the same problem. My township buys a lot of li- uh anti-skid and gravel. They use that for road repair, ninety-nine percent of the townships. And all of them that had called me said they don't like what they heard about the ten percent fee, the administration fee, I guess you referred to it as. That's their objective and they're highly upset. That's all I have to say.
And you, when you left a message on my phone today, you mentioned that you couldn't find it in the act, that we were.
I couldn't find where you could charge ten percent administration fee. And I spent quite a bit of time going through all of the liquid fuel things, bills and that. And I, I see no breakdown on how much you can charge and that upsets all the townships. And you were mentioning at your last commissioners meeting a price of three hundred and fifty dollars. I assumed it was for Pam, the minister. But a lot of townships made the comment, when Harrisburg sends a mandate down to townships, they don't pay for it and they have sent a mandate to use, uh, send the checks out for liquid fuel. And that's all they want. We, the townships want their liquid fuel money because it's ninety percent of the time they use it. And if they don't have their liquid fuel and they lose some of it for administration fee, a lot of roads aren't gonna get repaired.
Well, it would be helpful if the state then would take that responsibility on their own shoulders and send the checks straight to the municipality.
How many mandates have you seen passed down?
Don't they already? I mean, I think we're differing over something that is completely different. Doesn't the county get liquid fuels and then we give it away because we don't have roads? And then you already get liquid fuels.
We all get liquid fuel, but they're interpreting that you're taking some of their liquid fuel money.
So it's a miscommunication.
It's possible, yes.
Because we're not taking it out of yours.
All right, as long as that ten percent fee doesn't become a big issue. And that's the issue with all the municipalities. You're gonna take an administration fee out of the amount of money that's gonna be separated. Then I, if you're not Ben, I think you ought to clarify something.
Well, we need to clarify. How do you think that we should do that? As a letter to them best? Do we, should we start visiting?
I always, well.
This is a big miscommunication.
Yes, it is.
I understand that they're upset, but it's completely unjustified.
Well, you should send possibly a letter so that they have it on record or, and you don't, you guys don't make all the township meetings. It's highly impossible. We haven't seen yet ours and said you took off.
Been there over a year.
A lot of people don't make it, but if you don't communicate with the municipalities, they're saying, well, what are they doing? They're taking our money. You've got to clarify in black and white so they have it on their records that you're not taking any of their money. They rely on that. The smaller townships rely tremendously on liquid fuel. You wouldn't get your roads plowed.
Yeah, yeah.
And you wouldn't get your roads fixed and you wouldn't get your pothos fixed. You've gotta remember, a lot of municipalities take them.
All of them.
But I think, I think this, to some degree, this happens, like a lot of these things happen. So this was a casual conversation we had in a work session when.
But it was at your commissioners meeting that it was brought up, Jeff?
Well, no, no, it was voted on at the commissioners meeting. The conversation, I think, that sparked the controversy was Pam had had it at a work session so we could review it. Phil had asked, with this administrative fee, what, you know, what's that gonna do to everybody else? And I said, well, they're gonna get a little bit less from us as a result. When it was printed in the paper, it looked like we're taking liquid fuels money away from the municipalities.
Yes, it did.
And and so it was, the way it was written and framed, of course, you know, all the commissioners, they're, they're gonna be high and mighty and take everybody's money. It's like, no, like that, I mean, that's, that's not the way it was set up or that's not the way it works. Like, and so I, it's a, it's a, a PR stack.
Communication on your part, all of you, that you didn't relay to the townships how you were gonna do this. That's what they're all upset about. I'm just re, I'm just the messenger in this issue. And yes, my township's upset because we need every penny we can get.
Absolutely.
Uh, and the smaller townships, you, you know, they're figuring ten percent. And then they seen this figure in the paper, a hundred and fifty-six thousand. And they're, they're, some of them must be mathematicians because all of a sudden you're taking twenty thousand dollars. And I say, why do I know? Let's communicate with the commission. We need better communication from you three to the municipalities.
I'm not normally one to defend myself here, but it's a two-way street. I mean, before going to the paper and complaining. I mean, before going to the paper and complaining about these things, maybe they could have asked us.
Well, the letter that was written from a township, out of township, I won't comment on that. But the paper called me.
Right.
It commented on why I, what I thought, what I thought.
And you were there at both of our meetings, so.
And I told them, they don't plow roads, they don't repair roads, and everybody in these townships are saying, they're taking 10% of my liquid fuel money. I'm going to have nothing for road work.
Right.
That's why.
I understand.
And as far as, I'm the only one that comes from the council of government. Hey, I don't dictate to people. If they don't want to come, fine. But I'm very highly interested in this stuff. And I just want you to know, townships are upset throughout the whole county on this 10%. Clarify it a little better.
I'd like to say that I think that everybody would agree, we appreciate you being the emissary and coming here and bringing this to our attention. I mean, that's a very good thing to share.
You've got to get a better communication with the little peons out there called townships because they support you 100% in most cases. And if you lose that, you're losing everything.
Well, it is difficult when it's discussed in the meetings and the newspaper's taking down notes. They're taking down as much as they can, but they can't quote the entire conversation word for word. So unfortunately, when a little snippet of a comment that sounds like maybe it'll make people read, it gets in there. Not everything is, is.
I agree.
It was, it was.
But they can also go to the website and pick up the videos now of the meetings.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that you are sitting here pointing your finger at us and telling us it's our fault.
I didn't say it was your fault, it's a lack of communications.
Which is, you're blaming it on us.
Well, then I guess I'm blaming you.
Let's, first of all, the paper's not here, so, look at the paper. And if they have questions, then they should feel free to come to us. We all have open door policies. And I got zero calls, zero emails, and apparently you've gotten all of them. I mean.
You're the only phone call I got.
I'm the one that they call and I'll say, all right, and I called Cindy because she's your chairman. I didn't take three phone calls. I figured I relayed the message to the county commissioner's chairman, and she will relay it to the other commissioner. You're all three equal. I agree. Same as townships. You have a chairman, a vice chairman, and a supervisor. But we're all equal and we all have an opinion. I relayed the message to your commissioner, and I put it in her hands. I'm just telling you what the different townships are complaining about.
Right.
And I, I called some and all of them called me. I have a list of them.
Well, we appreciate that, and we appreciate hearing from them. And if we can communicate our position better, then we need to do that.
And I think once in a while, one place you can communicate, and I know all three of you should come, it's called the Council of Government. I know Ben comes, Jeff's come, Cindy, I haven't seen you there since you've been elected. But there's the point where they, individual townships have questions relating to the, to your job and your, you can, you've been there. Every subject discussed there isn't exactly the most interesting thing, but some of them are. But you've got to learn to communicate with the little townships that are under your controls, county commissioners. They want to work with you. Don't discourage them.
We understand that.
End the conversation.
And anytime anyone wants to have a conversation with any three of us, they should give us a call.
Absolutely.
Just like you do, Mr. Scully.
That's my best, huh?
And, and I think.
You can lead a horse to water, but you can't force him to drink it. And that, I can only tell him, call them.
I think all three of us publish our personal cellphone numbers on the website, like they can.
It's in your, it's in your book.
It's in the book too. And, and I think that it's important to reiterate that, that like, any complaint whatsoever can be fielded. You know, like, they should call us. I mean, nobody here is here to fight with anybody or.
You also got to remember, Jeff, not everybody that is a township supervisor is electronically smart like you guys are. And a lot of them are a little, a little tense in calling the so-called bigots, which some of us said doesn't bother, as you well know.
Well, it doesn't take a whole lot of technical skill to pick up the phone.
Oh, yeah. Alexander Belt created cell phones. But to get them to come, I give the privilege of coming in.
Well, we appreciate seeing you. We enjoy having you.
I just, I just want you to know that at the next CAG meeting, if Bucky or anybody tries to bring this up to me, I will be using the no-brainer joke on them. It's been used on these.
The no-brainer joke, yeah. But do not question me about the letter that was sent from another.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I just, I wanted to be funny and just.
I know. I take your humor and I laugh it off. I knew since you were a little kid. And I can always find information out about you from my family, my member, friend of my family. Guys, you got to start communicating with the peons. I hate to refer to township supervisor, but some of the smaller townships are actually, I think, afraid to communicate with you two. I mean, I had phone calls from people, I had to look it up and make sure they were a township supervisor. A lot of supervisors, yes. They come to one meeting or two meetings a month, and they don't do anything else.
Okay, well, we have a regular work session every Monday of every week. And every supervisor in Warren County is invited to attend.
But again, you're going back to, a lot of supervisors have a job just like you do. I had to be one that's.
Or you'd have a call and number, didn't you offer that at one point too?
We did, right.
And every one of them should know and have a booklet sent out by the planning and zoning, their Warren County booklet.
They should all have that.
They should all have that. I have mine. Do I believe your home personal phone number should be there? No.
We did discuss this liquid fuels at two or three meetings.
Your home phone number is, yeah, because mine's in.
You have mine.
In an effort to expedite the discussion though, because I totally agree with you, and this is something that we'll have a discussion about how to contact with them and have a discussion about this whole liquid fuels thing. You guys have meetings to go to.
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn, even though it's not a formal meeting.